I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion to correct the 2015 meeting minutes to reflect the actual start time of eight o'clock.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll recess the county commissioners' meeting and go to our solid waste district commission meeting and we'll have...
Motion to approve the minutes of September 17th.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve September 29th, 2015 bills as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Finance.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the September 29th, 2015 journal vouchers.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the September 29th, 2015 then and now certification as presented by the county auditor.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Could we hold just for a minute because this is a call I think is from...
Okay.
Hello? Yes.
Tony, Lisa?
Yes. You made the motion to the then and now?
Yes.
And I seconded it. And is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll turn it over to...
Discussion items, couple of things. Invoices for the curbside service, I have talked to Todd about that. The opt-out could be a potential problem, but we're working on that and I'll bring that back to the board.
What would be the problem with the opt-out?
We'd still be doing the same thing we're doing right now, sending out invoices and then certifying them and things like that.
You would because anyone who didn't want to be in would have to have their invoices sent, but it wouldn't exactly be the same because now instead of having thousands to mail, you probably have hundreds more.
Yeah, I'll try to sit down. Todd and I have got to have a meeting to discuss a few other things, projects, and I'll put that on the agenda for me and Todd. We'll discuss it and then bring it back to the board.
Right, you might want to have the meeting with us.
Right.
Todd and you and the three of us.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the education specialist, I want to move into exec session. There are a couple of other things, and I apologize, things always seem to pop up in my world after I turn in my agenda, but some articles about where the recycling industry is going due to the markets, I've got a copy here for more reading.
Is this for what, on personnel?
Yeah, we're going to go into exec session for employment, but this is just what's happening with the recycling industry right now. Everybody has this misconception that the recycling industry is a good thing to do if you want to make a healthy profit. Well, in the last four years, commodity markets have fallen by 50%, and I found it rather interesting that one waste hauling company is now putting a surcharge on for recycling and adjusting with the markets.
It's a variable.
It's a variable, such as like a fuel surcharge. Not that I'm proposing that for us, but I'm going to watch it very closely and I'll bring it back to the board because I think once this starts, you may see this go industry-wide.
This was the big argument that we made when people were talking about privatizing because when things are good and the prices are up, private haulers will benefit and there's no question that they'll recycle.
Right.
But when the price, and it's a very volatile market, so when the prices drop, then there's a good risk that those companies who also own landfills will not be as interested in recycling.
And so I will forego the quiz next week when I come in on the articles, so you don't have to study hard for that. And after that, I'd like to go into exec session.
Okay.
I'll move to go into executive session for personnel matters.
This will be for employment.
For employment.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
We better go to the other room because you don't know.
Okay.
I apologize for the rush.
I missed out on the big waiting for you the other way around.
Did you have anything further for your...
No ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Want to exit from executive session?
All right.
Oh yes, motion to exit from executive session.
I'll second it. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Action bring out of exec?
No action.
Motion to adjourn.
There's no action?
Actually, yes.
Can you give me, I don't have...
We're going to, yeah.
Do I have that?
Yeah.
Okay, the action that we're taking is that we are authorizing the promotion of a...
Driver.
Of a driver to a...
Mechanic one.
Mechanic one for solid waste.
And then are we going to post for the...
We'll do a journal entry to that effect.
Yes.
Okay, and then the second action is that you're going to post for an education specialist.
Yes ma'am.
Do you need us to do a journal entry?
It's in the signature.
Yeah. Do you need us to do a journal entry for the job description?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes.
Well, sorry, we do a journal entry for that too. Anything further then?
No ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Okay, sounds good.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're ready for you, Joel. We believe since this is an employment issue that we should go into executive session, so if there's a motion.
I'll move for employment to...
Firing, 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 et cetera.
Firing, firing.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
We're going into another room.
Okay, great.
And the reason we have to do that is we can't trust that anymore.
I, yeah, I understand.
Mello is trying to make it up. You've got to be out of here. You've got to be over at the L's at 11:55, so you have to leave here, what, 20 till?
And we don't have to eat, do we?
No, you're going to walk in, make the presentation, and walk out.
Okay.
I think they might take kind of job first.
That's right.
Okay, since you're reporting, so you can go on and go.
Okay, I move to move to executive session.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call, please.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Any action coming out?
No action. Shall we do a final thing?
I guess.
Well, Kelly's out there too. Kelly Jo, but yours isn't going to take very long, is it?
It could.
It depends on...
Okay. Okay, let's start anyway.
Okay.
Come in, Kelly Jo. We're going to do a final first if you don't mind. We're running short on time.
This is the resolution for the general fund increases. Ninety percent of this is we're doing another phone charge, and so it's moving budgets for the phone charges. We had set aside the telephone budgets because we weren't sure what contract we'd be operating under, so this is doing that transfer. There is, if you go to the third page, in Munich Court, there is some money in there, not only covering their phones, 10,000 of that, actually 10,900 of that is their phones. The additional 11,000 is for visiting judge and interpreter fee expenses that have come in very high this year and they're going over and need more, so that's to cover that. And then the clerk of courts right above that, theirs is their phones, and then $8,000, they're coming up short in their material supply lines and they would like to put in purchase orders. They always order next year's stuff at the end of this year. Earlier in the year, they had purchased shelving and we told them to kind of let us know, so it looks like they'll need that anyway, otherwise.
That salary and fringe, isn't the raise they give? Is that what that is?
Ah.
Close of courts on that first one?
Close of court salary and fringe.
Who said?
No, that isn't for raise. You know what, that's my head's throwing a blank right now. I will email you on that particular item.
It's a small amount, so it can't be...
What kind of case courts, is that, it's got the same salary and fringes, $30,000 for 98?
I think this, is this the...
Oh, that's for retirement. Retirement's is in here too. I apologize.
So the first one's for retirement?
All the threes are retirement payouts or termination vacation payouts. I apologize, that just came to me. Anything in the threes is for retirement term.
Now, the 27th pay...
That will come later.
That coming later.
Yeah, we'll do that like the summer.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I am making a motion to amend the general fund 2015 annual appropriation resolution number 14-0941 adopted December 11, 2014.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Here's the non-general fund. There is nothing particularly exciting in here, just a lot of, this is the end of the quarter and for some grants, it's the end of the year, so just a lot of cleanup items on grants and projects.
Motion to amend to the non-general fund 2015 annual appropriation resolution number 14-0943 adopted December 11, 2014.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
The next item is just authorizing a grant application for the workers' comp. You recall last year, we got this grant and bought like a big x-ray machine. There was some additional money in the grant, the grant program, so they put it out for additional project requests. We were thinking of contemplating buying this machinery anyways. It's a $50,000 piece of machinery. There's only $10,000 left in the grant portion, but we're going to go ahead and apply for it to alleviate the expense on this. The rest of the money is coming from water resources.
Okay, and what is it for again?
It's a machine that helps them turn on and off valves.
Oh, okay.
In the water.
Seconding out me?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Motion to authorize an application to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the Safety Intervention Grant Program.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Number four, we don't need to do, although Joanne will bring you this if you want her to. We'll talk about that in a minute. I do need this journal entry added. We talked before about covering the flu shots again. We do this every year. This is just the journal entry that will officially allow for that. I believe they're scheduled next month.
Okay, it's in our best interest to do this.
Yeah, it keeps people here.
You can go do a journal entry then?
Yes.
And then for discussion, these are the most current requests before the board, but the big one is the board of elections, the poll books. The state is offering that 85 cent, or 85, yeah, 85% reimbursement. The issue though is we have to pay upfront and then get reimbursed, so that while it's a big chunk, it's worth trying to make the room for, but that does limit what else we have to do the rest of the year. I do feel we could buy two more cars if that's the board's wish. My recommendation on all the wage requests is that we put them in with the 2016 budgets, which we'll be talking about next week, and consider those for January 1st starts rather than now.
The same for the vehicles next year?
The vehicles would be the recommended. I'm saying let's go and do it this year.
Okay. Now, how many new vehicles will that mean altogether, Todd? We ordered three or five?
Three sheriff cars and we've ordered two trucks, plowing trucks, so this would bring the total of five patrol vehicles, pursuit rated, I think they call.
I'm going to suggest that we not do the purchase until we get the number for the detective bureau.
Okay.
Because remember we met, they gave us a number for every...
Right, but the prices are going up on these vehicles.
Well, if we say we're going to hold the order until we get the number, they're going to call us in five minutes.
They'll be here later today.
But you know how long ago we had that meeting?
Right.
And they're going to tell us how many people they needed in the...
Will that make a difference in what we order, Todd?
Joanne, depending on what they turn in, I suppose, if it's what we suspect, no. Joanne comes in at 2:30 or 3:00, so let's see if we can get the answer by then.
Okay, that'll be good because we'd like to go ahead and do this, okay.
Otherwise, like the Munich Court, again, the visiting judge interpreter, we actually put in this time. They need the money very quickly.
So we'll do a journal entry for the drug tests under probation?
Those each time, as that, we'll put in like 5,000 each time. They don't need it right now, but they're going to come up short, so yeah, we'll adjust that as it comes.
Okay.
And that's my recommendation to finish the year. Again, though, that's, you know, we have a lot of requests for labor.
And then next week, we're going to talk about...
Next year, '16 starts.
Didn't we just do the interpreter?
That was on this budget.
The visiting judge, that's done.
Yeah, yeah.
And the 205, that's not done yet.
No, that would still need...
And we're not doing it today?
No, they're still getting us final figures. That's an estimate right now.
And the year-end materials, is that in the budget? That's the first one on the list.
That was in this one we just did.
So we take that off?
Yes, yes.
And then the 2,000 jury fees, $2,000?
That is not in, that was not in this one. That will come.
Okay, that's later.
Yeah.
And then the total, okay, later. The 4,000 for, oh, 54,000, so we're going, that has to come later, right? I mean, you're going to bring in a different resolution to do that.
Yes, Joanne will bring the resolution to necessity first and then we move the money down. That we, we need to get the order and the budget and come a little bit...
But you'll get the number for the detective bureau.
Yes, yes, we'll get that. We'll see if they'll send that to us right now.
Just for my answer, the juvenile court, the indigent fees.
Yes.
We've got request 100,000. We've got zero, but there's no asterisk there, so what does that mean?
That was, you'll recall, that was Judge Berger sent a letter, maybe June or July, indicating we, I want to say it's 40 and 50 that we currently charge. He asked it to be raised to 50 and 60, if you recall.
That's right, I remember that.
And my recommendation is we're low in all our labor categories, which, well, that's a contractual service. It is for labor service. My recommendation was that we focus first on the biggest efficiencies within the current county employees, but that is on the list. My doubt is that it won't be adjusted next year either, but in future years, as we've been, as we begin catching up our existing employees, that is on the list to address within hopefully the next, unless in five years.
Under indigent fees, under juvenile court.
The juvenile court, yeah.
Because it's got the asterisk. I'm thinking we're going to, we're going to do this soon.
My guess is that one will not change next year either. Of course, the board has the final say on that.
What does that mean for him?
Well, this actually is for all the indigent fees. He wanted it to go to 50 and 60. That would be true for all the courts. I have, I put it under him because he's the one that did request it.
Okay.
We're not the lowest county. We, he provided a list.
Right, I remember the list.
I want to say, we're actually low. We're at the state minimum, but we're not the only county there, I guess is what I'm trying to say. There were actually a lot of counties. The problem is Summit is higher, and so when the judges need counsel, people are like, well, let me see if Summit needs me first and then I'll come to you. That's frustrating for the courts, of course.
But it's not a good idea to raise that, in your opinion?
Not right now. I think the money should go to other labor issues that we have, you know, that we recognize people are underpaid.
Anything, Sarah?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're ready for you. Yeah, the email from Denise, she said that she's attached the resolution for the additional sales and use tax. Do we have a copy?
Yeah, it's in your packet.
It said number D2 was...
It's under please add.
It was changed.
Please add to the agenda.
Pardon? Oh, it's under please add?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have that. Okay, okay.
We're not going to do anything.
No, no, we need to, I want to talk about it, but not, we're not going to take action. We're ready for you. Thank you.
You're welcome. I had one item for executive session, so I don't know if you want to start there or...
Yes, I've got, you want to move?
Sure. A motion going to executive session for employment?
Yes, resignation.
Resignation.
Okay, I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Shall we go in the other room? Roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Is there action coming out?
Yes, we do. We are authorizing the, well, first of all, we're accepting the resignation of the JFS Budget and Finance Administrator effective Monday, October 26, 2015, so that will be a journal entry. And we're also authorizing the posting of this same job, JFS Budget and Finance Administrator, for both internal and external posting.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a journal entry as well. Okay, for the open session, if you'd like to begin.
Right, you just addressed the B item in open session, so C is a resolution relevant to our 2015 prevention, retention, and contingency plan. The board had, well, actually, let me just go through the plan. I believe you have a packet of our plan in your packet, and we met with the community, county community, what's the formal name of the group, Portage County Community Planning Committee several weeks ago to analyze the current plan, to provide any suggestions with amendments to the plan. And so you have the revised packet in this plan. It includes a revision relevant to utility assistance for those that qualify. It's allowing for those that are delinquent on their utilities for us to not only pay that bill, but any delinquent fees to bring them current, so to avoid disconnection. And the other amendments were to provide housing assistance to those in homeless shelters. And then a final piece was clarification on application dates received by Job and Family Services. So we just wanted to present those amendments to you so that we could move forward with the finalization of our PRC plan.
Motion to approve the revised prevention, retention, and contingency plan effective October 1, 2015, for the Portage County Department of Job and Family Services.
I second the motion. Is there a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and then item E is in relationship to that. When we did outreach to get this group together, we found that there were a number of committee members that were no longer employed at their previous agencies, so we did an outreach to all of them, and four of those professionals no longer wanted to serve on the board. We had some internal retirements that we needed to amend, so we're presenting to you an amended community planning committee lists, and we're hoping that the board will approve this resolution and their appointments.
A motion to appoint to the Portage County Community Plan Committee.
Where's the resolution?
It says...
A 1D.
Yeah. 1G?
D, D is involved.
Just a second, I'm looking for it here. There's E.
Right there.
Okay, all right. I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, item E. Several meetings ago, the Board of Commissioners approved the termination of a contract between Job and Family Services and Family and Community Services. That should be terminated on September 30, 2015. We recently had a meeting with the director of that agency and administrator, and we would like to present to you an amendment to that. We'd like to extend their contract for four months to run through January 31 of 2016. We feel that this needs a transition period. The extension of the contract amount would be $52,000 for those four months. And again, we think it's vital for the clients that we serve to make sure they're getting the right services in the transition statement.
Would that be a journal?
Yeah, we can do a journal entry for that. And number F?
F is we're asking for, to create a JFS jobs counselor in preparation for that transition at the beginning of 2016. So we're asking the board to approve the creation of a JFS jobs counselor, and then also G is the recommendation or approval to post that position. So we won't be posting it right away. It'll be probably in two months, but we'd like your permission to move forward when the time is right.
We'll do a journal entry to recommend to create a JFS jobs counselor, and when it comes in, you'll come back for the posting, or do you want to do that now?
If we could approve the posting now, we'll post it at the end of 2015 and we'll be prepared for February then.
I do a journal entry then, that we authorize a JFS jobs counselor posting at the end of the year.
Right.
Okay, did you have anything for us?
No.
Thank you so much.
You have a good day.
Thank you, Kelly Jo. The only thing is we need to do a resolution, so we're ready to go to senior court on the O's. Can you look at your, please, the item on the agenda? The board of elections needs an answer by noon. If you have any questions about number one.
Which number are you talking about?
Number one on please add to your agenda. You know what, I think I'll look mine in my office.
Yeah, I'll give mine on the screen.
It's dangerous to say if they don't hear from us, they assume we approved because that's not, never the case. So we have to make sure that Terry knows that we have to be affirmative. I assume everything is correct. It has to be approved by the state, right? What is the change in language?
I have no idea. It wasn't highlighted?
Could we, could we get Terry on the phone and see if she can explain what the change is? It's, it's in issue number three only. This is... Issue number three.
Hey, Terry, it's Steph from the Commissioner's Office. How are you? I'm good, thanks. The Commissioners have your email from yesterday about issue three and the change in the language. They had a couple of questions. Can I put you on speaker? You're in open session, and it's Maureen, and Maureen is absent today, but it's Kathleen and Vicky, okay? Hang on. Do you hear me?
Hi, can.
Hi, Terry. This is Kathleen Taylor, and Vicky Klein is also here. We haven't seen, there's no highlight of what the changes are. I assume that issue three changes came from the Secretary of State. Am I correct, or the AG's office?
They came from the, well, technically, they came from the ballot board.
Okay.
But yeah. And the changes, I didn't, no, they're not highlighted, and I wouldn't know what they are.
Okay. The reason that we're getting them is that we have an opportunity to speak, or is it within our authority to approve?
It is. Just so you know that there was, every person who has an issue on the ballot, once there's a change, per statute, they're supposed to get another opportunity to review galley proof.
Okay.
Make sure that your issue hasn't, you know, through the process of making the change to issue three, changed. So you would be looking at the MRDD and the Portage County Library issues just to make sure that when we were in programming, there weren't any changes.
Okay. We should then probably do a journal entry that we have reviewed it and have no recommendations for change?
That is up to you. I presume, because this wouldn't have been the first time you got galley proof.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, you can, if that's, if you want to do that to make sure your records are complete, but I don't, there's no requirement.
Okay. All right.
I just need to make, I just need to send it.
Okay.
I don't need to have a response.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you, Brett. Did you have questions for her?
No.
Thank you, Terry.
Your roll call.
Okay, fine.
Aye.
Then we just have to make a journal entry that we received it.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Do you want me to pull the first time you got this and just check the two to make sure there's changes?
Yeah, you would. That would be perfect, yeah.
Really looking at your two ballot issues right now.
Yeah, right. Okay. Okay, that's good. Is there anything else that we need to do before we go to lunch?
Nope.
Okay, which time do we have to leave here? At 22?
You have to be there at 11:55, ready to go.
Okay, well, we can do our resolutions right now if you want me to.
A motion to approve the Thursday, September 24, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Whoever, I'll second it. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, September 24, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky? Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, September 24, 2015 Journal Bouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, September 24, 2015 Ben and Now Certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to accept the grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Governor's Highway Safety Office Grant for the Portage County Sheriff's Department entitled Selective Traffic Enforcement Program 2016.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to accept the grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Governor's Highway Safety Office Grant for the Portage County Sheriff's Department entitled Impaired Driving Enforcement Program 2016.
I second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. The discussion items, email from the Port Authority, including a resignation letter from Tom Chima. Do we need to take action on this?
Usually it is accepted, and we'll send them a letter, the board will sign, and then we advertise it. So they want to approve.
So we do a journal entry of acceptance. And do we need to do anything about the advertising? No, okay. And on the tax resolution, I did get a call back, and if, if it is non-emergency, we do not need three. We only need two. However, it's terribly important for us not to have continuing in there and five here. It has to be one or the other. He did offer to read the resolution if we would send it to him in case he did have any suggestions for us. And I think Denise is sending it also to someone in the state, at the state level, that she's been working with. And so we should probably wait to hear from her as to any concerns that she might come up with.
Okay.
So we'll put this on the agenda for passage then, for Tuesday. Could you, would you be willing to email the draft resolution to Brad Cole?
Oh, sure.
From CCAO? Let's see, that takes care of the add to your agenda one. Are there any questions or concerns about the information only? Then what about, none of them are, okay. On the referred one, did you have any concerns about that?
No.
Okay, all right. We'll wait then till this afternoon to do the journal entries. And we can recess now for lunch and to go to the senior event. And we'll come back here then at 1 o'clock.
You know, you're going to the Els Lodge, the Freedom?
Yeah. Arrive by 11:55?
Yeah, they want to, they're going to stop when you guys get there, and they're going to stop for the presentation.
This CCAO Solar Energy Program, Palmer Energy, who's coming, just they, they are coming, right?
Everybody's coming. You want everybody invited from the Infirmary Road, the Sheriff's, and JDC, the Don Ward, the Water, everybody was invited.
Oh, good. I'm really pleased about that. It's been a long time. But they were hired by CCAO to assist us in trying to determine whether or not we should be interested in a program, and if so, then to get more information to help us.
So that's what this is. Palmer Energy is coming to make the presentation.
That's at 1 o'clock, and we have best and advisory, County Auditor.
How long have you been commissioners?
This is my first year.
First year, so.
I stand here, I think this is my third year, this time that I was a commissioner six years before.
In Portage, well.
Yeah, and then I was in the State House for eight years in between. But we're always looking for ways to save energy and have clean energy.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
This is going to be exciting to look at anyway.
Well, it's nice that it's finally making some financial sense. We're, we're for the technology, but it has to make some financial sense, too, at the same time.
And do they have flexible rooftop panels?
Well, they're out there. The problem that you have with some of the rooftop, you're talking, it's more expensive, and it doesn't necessarily pay for itself. That doesn't mean it's not a good decision in your case, if that's what you want to do someday, but most of the time, right now, that you need a field, throw it down in the field and all that kind of stuff.
And we do have the space for that.
Right.
How about the roads?
Hmm?
The solar panels in the roads?
Maybe someday.
You don't want people going by throwing stones as they drive by.
I think it's in Germany.
Germany has a ton of solar.
Yeah, it's like, they start building a road, dark black, and it actually lights up all their signs on the roads, and keeps it darker, and it heats the road in the winter.
Yeah.
It's pretty neat.
Yeah.
We'll get into that.
I like that, keep the road in the winter thing.
But Germany has a lot more solar than we do in the States.
I just wonder if we should start, one of our directors is still on his way. Maybe wait one more minute, then we'll start.
The first five minutes, we're having to do solar anyways. It would just be about development.
That's good. So do you want to go ahead and start with them?
Do you want me to go ahead and start them?
Yeah, yeah. Are you going to explain how you're involved with the CCAO?
Yep. Yeah, I think that probably makes sense on how Palmer got involved and who we are.
If you want to leave one for her, she'll read it when she comes back.
Sure. Definitely sure you guys know who Larry Long and Tom Stroup are.
Yes, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Okay, we're going to start. Thanks.
Larry Long and Tom Stroup, back in 2008, were looking for somebody to look at the existing program that they had. They had a natural gas program that thirty counties participated in. And they got with Dale Arnold from the Farm Bureau, put on RFP, and chose Palmer to give them an independent analysis on who, you know, what the program was at that time. Now Palmer is, as Larry and Tom were looking for at the time, an independent energy consultant. We, Mark Frye, myself, and Elaine Canning own the corporation. If you go out there, there's a lot of other companies out there, but they're connected to suppliers, or connected to the actual utilities, and you can't be independent if you're actually, you know, looking at a utility or supplier. So that's always, that was a very important part of their decision. We've been around since the early 80s and have been purchasing electricity, natural gas.
Can you hear back there?
You guys hear me back there? Okay.
Okay, here's Jeff from Water River.
So when they came to us to look at their natural gas program, we saw a couple of things that really concerned us in the beginning. One was the CCAO was purchasing the gas for the counties in the summer months, and they're, you know, going a few million dollars in the hole every summer, and then the counties would pay them back. I mean, not that we were worried about the counties not paying them back, but that's a financial liability on the CCAO's part. The other part was they were utilizing the consultant at the time, actually worked for the supplier that was providing the services, which doesn't make sense to me at all. You need to be independent to get the best information. And the third part was they were using one supplier throughout the state of Ohio. And where it's different, where it used to be one supplier, right now, we have five different suppliers that are supplying the CCAO program, because what may be the most inexpensive way in Portage County is not the most inexpensive way in Lucas County, or Medina, or any of those things that you need to look at. So we gave them their report. They asked us if we'd be interested in continuing consulting with them on their energy programs. That program now has fifty-two or fifty-three counties participating in it, about a million and a half units a year. It saves, and I'm just using general percentages, but ten, fifteen percent a year on their cost. Plus, there's unwritten savings of your time and effort associated with managing your engine, your needs. Now, one important thing about that program you need to understand, I'm not making your decisions for you, and I'm not making decisions for any of those fifty-some counties that are participating. There is a steering committee made up of commissioners, as well as facilities managers and county administrators. We'll come to them with various pieces of information, obviously with what's going on in the market, do all the background technicals, the RFP, and everything's based on the RFP process, but they're actually making the decisions. And that's a very important part here. It's just somebody out in the blue is not making those for you. What that program then developed into was an electrical purchasing program for the, for county facilities, and there's close to sixty counties that participate in that in the state. Very similar process. Everything's based on the RFP, collective RFP process, substantial savings in that as in electric for most counties is a much bigger expense. After that, we got involved, and Tom and Larry came to us, and they kept saying, "We keep hearing that you guys are the truth tellers. Can you get involved from a demand side? Save us money on actual usage." We created Palmer Conservation at that point. That company's taken off. We've got fifteen employees at it now. It's not just with counties, but it's also with a lot of school systems in the state, that sort of work. And other things that we've always looked at, and this then became Suzanne's Gavin here, you know, just over a year ago, that we started to look at solar. We've always had a lot of questions from various county commissioners coming to us, saying, "We're getting bombarded by solar developers out there. We've got to come, we've got to put solar, we've got to put, it makes sense," and we don't know if it really makes sense yet. So we spent six months doing a very in-depth analysis on solar. Melissa's here today to really talk to you in depth about the solar program. But what we figured out was, yes, in certain circumstances, right now, financially, it makes sense. I mean, we believe in green technologies, but we also believe that you shouldn't be paying three or four times the amount of money for your electricity to use them. And we've, we've found some situations now that work very well, that you can actually do solar, and that's why I brought Melissa along. Now Bob is also, works for me. He has responsibility for about twenty of the counties, so he's here as well, just to, Portage is in his area. I do handle the program completely for the CCAO, for Palmer, and then Suzanne, Delaney, and myself, and now Keith, that he's, Keith Bosser, that's involved with the CCAO. We meet very frequently on all aspects of all these programs, and they, they do come to certain meetings. Today Suzanne's on vacation, actually, so if she was unable to attend, or she would have been here. So at that point, are there any questions about where we came from on these, these programs to get to this point, or do you just want me to jump in, have Melissa jump into the solar?
I'll just say a sentence of how Portage County got involved. I attended a CCAO meeting where Palmer Energy presented the concept of solar energy, and the purpose, the reason CCAO hired them, if I understand it correctly, is to advise us, anyone interested, any county interested, to do an analysis to find out whether or not it would be feasible or recommended for us to pursue. So we're using Palmer Energy as a gift from CCAO.
Well, that's true and not true from one thing. You have to remember one thing. It's, when I'm speaking to you, I'm actually speaking as a representative of the County Commissioners Association. Even though I am an employee and owner of Palmer, they have already vetted us through, hired us to speak for you as the county. So even though, yeah, I am very much vested in Palmer, obviously, today I'm talking to you as a rep from the CCAO.
That's what I was saying. CCAO is giving us the gift of the consultation to look at what we have, and to give us some suggestions or advice about whether or not it's worthwhile looking into or pursuing, or forget it, right?
Definitely. Well, and don't forget, even if you come, if we come to that conclusion, I'd forget it now, that doesn't mean in a year or two that technologies will change and get better. And that's one thing that we're out there looking at all the time, is to make sure that you're always kept abreast. But with that, I'd like to pass it to Melissa, because she's done a lot of hard work on this, this solar project. She's a lot of information for everybody.
Absolutely.
Everybody here from the county behind us?
They're all, they're all directors of some of the facilities that we think might be involved.
Okay, and please stop us at any second when you have questions, just.
I'm just going to give you, I'm Melissa Webby. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the CCAO SE Solar Savings Initiative. So this will just give you a general idea of what we're looking for, what are the benefits to the county, what are some of the potential risks, and how we're going to mitigate them. And just a general idea of solar as a whole, just so you guys have an understanding of what it's going to look like, And just a general idea of solar as a whole, just so you guys have an understanding of what it's going to look like, what it takes to install it. So again, if you have any questions, just please stop me along the way. So. Okay, again, just like Kirk said, this is through the CCAO ESC. So why now? The biggest piece is the declining costs. Five years ago, solar was exponentially more expensive than it is now. With the improvements in technology and the way things are made, this cost have been on a steady decline for the past several years and they're going to continue to go that way. At the same point, the cost of electricity itself has continued to go up and is projected to continue increasing. So at some point there, there's going to be a point where they meet and that's what we're trying to get. Also, one of the big pieces is this investment tax credit that obviously doesn't directly affect the county because you guys can't take advantage of it. But from a developer's standpoint and somebody, you know, putting this array on county property to benefit the county, it's a thirty percent tax credit. So just thirty percent of the initial investment, they can take that credit for. That's currently set to expire at the end of 2016. There are a lot of talks of if it is going to expire, are they going to change the language, et cetera? But right now, it's set to decline to ten percent. So that's a big decrease.
Tax credit. We don't pay taxes.
Yes.
Right, but that's why developer, we'll get into that. In order to take advantage of that, and that's really, that last point there is fundamentally important to this whole process here. That is what's driving a lot of the savings right now. Once that thirty percent goes away, there will be some instances where there still could be savings associated with this program. But that thirty percent, literally, if the developer spends a million dollars on it, that first year, they're taking a $300,000 tax credit, which even though you're not seeing that, that is what's lowering the price that you're paying per kilowatt hour. So that there's savings associated with your purchase on that. So you're not, and she'll get into this, you guys won't own this solar array for a number of years so that the developers can take advantage of the federal tax credits that are out there. It'd be, it doesn't necessarily make sense just to do it yourself because you would be losing out on a significant portion on the cost of the facilities.
They get the savings so they pass it on to us.
Right.
Yes, yep.
Through a lower rate.
Yep. So I'm just going to move this over.
I think you pointed that maybe. No, you pointed to the monitor. What do you do?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, so I'll just take you through, like I said, a brief introduction of the program itself, briefly through the construction process and, you know, what that would mean for your land. Then give you an idea of what kind of land we're looking at. Just any questions, so. Just to start you off with some useful terms that I might use throughout the presentation. PB, photovoltaic, that solar array, PB array, all kind of synonymous. DC, that's the direct current that a solar array outputs. That's not what you use in your home. You use AC current or alternating current. So part of the solar array process is when the array is producing electricity, it has to be switched from DC to AC. So just some of the logistics. An inverter is what switches it from DC to AC. SREC, solar renewable energy credit. ITC, the investment tax credit that we just mentioned. And ECM, energy conservation measure. So just to briefly go through, how does solar work? And this is going to be the same whether it's on a roof or on the ground. You'll have your panels, sunlight will hit the panels and that creates an interaction between photons and the electrons on the panel, creating a current, the direct current. The inverter, which you can see in number two, switches the current from direct to alternating. So it can be used in your home or your business. And then number three is where it goes through your utility meter, your general service to, basically, it will run backwards when it's producing more electricity than what you're using. But it's going to work into your general service, so you're buying less power through the utility or supplier.
Could I ask, is there another one of these folders?
Yes, I'll tell one. Yes.
We have, a reporter just came in. Give it to him. And if you have a folder as well, don't worry. We have one. Thanks.
And the next slide is just the same thing. It's just showing it a different way, but it's the same idea. So I'll move forward into the program itself. So facility requirements, I think we've, you've gotten a little bit of this information before, but we're looking for facilities that have a peak monthly demand of 200 kilowatts or more. Or annual usage in excess of 500,000 kilowatt hours. I know one of the big things that you guys had presented was that complex on Infirmary Road. And not all of those facilities quite meet that 500,000 kilowatt hour mark. But due to how it's arranged, it might still work to tie them in depending on the size. So just because they're not 500 kilowatt hour, 500,000 kilowatt hours, doesn't mean they're out of the question at this point.
We were thinking together.
Yes. Because I believe, you had sent me the bills and I'd looked at them and I believe the four or five facilities on that piece of land were right around 3 million kilowatt hours. So in total, it definitely meets that 500,000 mark that we're looking for. And then, just like I said, land's in the direct vicinity of the facility so we can tie it into the meters. You know, it's harder to go cross roads and things like that. So having the land right there is what makes this the easiest. And then interest in fixing your power supply costs, a portion of those costs for a known period. So what are the benefits? Long-term power supply hedge at a known price. You know that whatever this array produces is going to be purchased at X price. So even if your other electricity costs through your supplier or utility go up, you'll know what this price is. So it's a risk management tool. Additionally, one of the big pieces is the reduction or elimination of your generation capacity costs. These capacity costs in FE territory have gone from $20 to 120 to $300 per megawatt day. And that means a lot of money on your bottom line. So a solar array, because an array is producing power, when you're generally demanding the most electricity, like when it's hot out in the middle of the summer, it helps to eliminate those costs and reduce them greatly.
Which means you'll get, which means you'll get a much better bid response from the electric suppliers on the other part of your bill that's providing the other part of the electricity. That's a huge part of this whole solar deal is the savings on the capacity costs are really driving a lot of this.
Good. FA, what does that mean?
Oh, First Energy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
First Energy.
And kind of along the lines of what Kirk just said, you're going to be buying less on-peak power. The solar array is generally going to be producing during the day when it's sunny out. On-peak times are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So generally, when, you know, you're in the office, things like that, things are up and running. So if you're using less electricity because your solar array is producing at its most during those times, you're buying more off-peak power, which is generally less expensive. And you're also going to be buying less power from the utility or supplier. So again, you know, if electricity costs continue to go up, you are going to be a little protected from that. So potential risks. One of the risks is that power prices don't increase as they're expected. You know, if things don't continue to increase like we've seen, that could potentially result in less savings. But the chances of that happening are much less than power prices going up with the way the market is. So it's a risk, but it's not a huge risk. Another risk would be if the developer goes bankrupt or fails to perform contracted duties. That, there are usually all sorts of clauses to, that would protect the county from that. It's a possibility, it happens, but the county would be protected from seeing any negative piece from that.
One thing that we've been working on with Suzanne at the CCAO right now is developing power purchase agreements that are, you know, in line with county interests. And that's one of the things that we've had to address in that, in order to, you know, make it so this is a safe business decision for Portage.
Additionally, and kind of like we mentioned before, changes with federal and state regulations, like the tax credits, that could change what kind of pricing is being offered, which could make this more or less favorable. And changes in the utility rate structure. Right now, you have so many charges from your utility that are per kilowatt hour or per kilowatt. If they choose to go through and change some of those costs to per month charges, that could result in less savings. But there will always be per kilowatt hour charges, per kilowatt charges. So the potential negative on that is not quite as high.
Well, and the other thing you have to remember too, and you mentioned to me that you were in the State House for many years, you know, the government doesn't change things overnight very quickly. It takes a long time and a lot of debate to make those kind of changes, so it's.
Copy and rap, Kristen.
Yeah.
CCAO assistance. So one of the big pieces is that we are trying to gauge county interest. And depending on how many counties and how many facilities are interested, we would be combining those interested counties and facilities into an RFP. Doing that would let the CCAO go out to both regionally, regional and national developers to get an idea of what kind of costs would be offered, what kind of agreements, things like that. And obviously, if we're presenting them with, you know, a bigger project, that generally will help the costs go down. Contract and legal assistance, you know, we are looking at all types of agreements. We want to help the counties get the best deal and make sure that there is truly savings there. Valuation of the RFP results, if pricing comes back or whatever is offered through the RFP process comes back and it doesn't look favorable, we're going to tell you that. And then just cost savings in general from the CCAO provided guidance, which we had kind of talked about before. So, and then other important factors to consider. Like I stated earlier, costs have been decreasing, making this a lot more favorable. It's happening in the state. You know, this isn't just a new thing. There are counties and businesses who have solar panels up and running. It's happening. Panel efficiency continues to increase. That means that you're going to get more output over a smaller area. Government legislation, you know, the drive for clean energy, green energy, that always is going to be a big driving factor in this as well. As far as incentives or what kind of push there is for green power. The next slide is just kind of an idea of facilities. We've looked at your bills, so this isn't as important for this conversation, but a lot of times, we're just looking for ones that have land available, which you guys do. So program process.
Actually, that last slide is important though for you to recognize. You mentioned the question earlier about the flexible panels for roofs. Someday, we're not there yet. I mean, it's, unless you tell me we're, we want to do this anyways for a different reason, that's a different story. But really, for right now, the ones that we got to concentrate are not buildings like this one, because you don't have the land here that you need to do it, but the ones that are on the outskirts.
Just in general program process, so identifying interested counties, that's why we're here today to talk to you. Utility bills, which we've already done an evaluation of yours. We've looked at the land from Google Maps and seen, you know, and I've been told that you guys have the land available. I've run the numbers through our economic feasibility model to see what kind of savings there are versus the current utility tariff. Then there would be just an agreement between the CCAO and the county, so we can go out for the RFP process. We would put that RFP out on the street and see what developers come back with and make a recommendation from there.
Right. The agreements that I was discussing earlier, that Suzanne's working on, were close. I think within the next week or two, we'll have the actual CCAO county agreement, which gives you the opportunity then to actually participate in the RFP process. The secondary part of that is the actual agreement with the prospective developers. That's going to come at a later date. But the county agreement should be, we should be able to email that to you the next week to 10 days.
We have the Dogburns facility out there as well.
Yes, I do have that information. And that, if you're referring to the facilities piece, which said which ones seem to fit, which ones don't, that's just a general kind of overview of what I've seen based off of counties in general.
We have a hospital also that's now private, now a profit, but it's located in an area that's quite far removed from the other facilities, so it probably wouldn't work, but.
It would probably have to be a separate array on its own. Having to go underneath the ground to do all the wiring and stuff tends to get expensive because it's per foot. So if it's that far, it would probably be better as its own.
First, they're connected to the county, they're welcoming in from the county.
Yes, absolutely.
Wherever you tell us is a county facility.
They don't need more than.
Well, it's a possibility. I mean, it's, it was a county hospital at some point.
Yeah.
This is, again, very tentative, but just the idea, we're coming here to talk to you today. If this is something you really want to look at as far as getting pricing and offers, we would include you on that RFP. Hopefully have that RFP back in the near future and make a recommendation from there. So just to give you an idea of the construction process, this is just.
Question, within that process, is this all still provided by the CCAO with no cost? In other words, if you decide to join the RFP and then back out?
If the RFP.
Are we pretty clear?
At this point, yes. But I mean, that's, that's more of a question for Suzanne as well, but at this point, yes, Your Honor. Now, after the fact, obviously, there's fees that are associated that developers are going to.
You're talking about Suzanne Delaney from the, she's the executive director of the CCAO.
So yes, this is just a very general construction process, you know, as basic as it gets. So the first thing they're going to do is come out and do a site survey. They want to get an idea of the land, what kind of area they're looking at, and design from there. Then they're going to dig a lot of holes to run wiring. This can be done in open trenching, so where you see the holes, or it can be done through directional boring, where they won't actually have to tear up all of the ground, so it's less invasive. That does tend to get more expensive, but it is an option. Running the conduits for the electrical, they're going to pour the foundation. Now, the array isn't sitting on one big concrete block, but the posts that hold it up are going to be, you know, concrete in the ground. They've got to stick there through rain and snow and everything. They'll put up the framework, which is going to hold the arrays, do the wiring, and put in the actual modules themselves. So just very general overview. And I've included a number of pictures. So this is just to give you an idea of what the trenching process looks like and running the conduits. If you continue, again, they've got the foundation in the ground, the initial posts, you can still see the trenching, and then when they fill it in afterwards. And this is all open trenching. This isn't directional boring where they go underneath. So then you can see some of the framework. And it really depends on what kind of panels are used, how they do the frame. But this is, again, general overview of what the framework and the panels look like.
From a timing standpoint, what's nice too is the construction of these solar arrays, it's the technology that's expensive. The construction's very, it's not like building a building, you're trenching it, putting a couple of posts and then.
And the construction process itself generally is not a huge, long process. If the planning is done beforehand, it can be done in a matter of three months. And again, these are just some ideas of what ground-mounted arrays look like. So from an overview next to a building, things like that, just to give you a general idea. So now I'll just discuss some of the size examples, just to give you an idea of what kind of land you're looking at. If you have a facility that uses a million kilowatt hours a year, we're estimating, depending on how it uses electricity, maybe 1.5 to 2 acres if that's.
Let me ask you real quick. I'm ignorant here because I do own bills, but I don't really realize how much I actually use in a year.
Yes.
You have that stuff and you looked at it. What, that complex out on Infirmary, what are we roughly using out there?
All the facilities together were roughly 3 million kilowatt hours. So just to give you an idea, that's closer to customer B. The capacity number, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it doesn't just depend on how much you're using, but how you're using it. So this says five to six acres, but if you guys are using more on-peak, which I'm assuming you are, that number could be more than six acres.
I would assume that area out there is pretty consistent, except for maybe the makeshift, because they're all. because they're all pretty much being used during the day though, around the clock.
Okay.
I would also argue that we, that the on-peak spike is, is a false assumption because you're talking about the jail and detention center.
And it's on all the time, yes, absolutely.
So, so the dog ward, and you're going to have heat and whatnot going through the animals, okay?
It's cold really, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and the, and you know, it's diff, it's going to be different for a facility like an office building versus a facility that's on 24/7, but economically it can make sense either way. It's just a matter of, like I said, how much you're using and how you're using it.
You're still lowering your overall on-peak capacity charges.
Right.
And those are the expensive ones. Your off-peak, the power is a lot cheaper.
Yep. So this is just general assumptions, but you might be five, six acres, um, but the complex on Infirmary Road, it depends, it could be more than that, it could be less than that. Same idea with these two, these are just larger, um, but the general idea was that complex on Infirmary Road looks like a, a great place to start.
The other thing too, we should probably say, the point of this program is not, we don't want to take 100% of your facility's usage offline.
Absolutely.
That doesn't make sense financially. This is to take roughly...
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent of that facility's energy usage offline, because that's where the savings become real at this point.
Um, just in general for size though, if you're going to put in a one mega water array, it's about seven, eight acres, so I think you guys do have the land available at that complex from what I've, I've heard. And the rest is just references and citations, just to give you an idea of where all this information came from besides myself and...
The other part of this too, you need to think about that, I wish it was easy where we could just take your 500 acres, put a whole bunch down, it would take care of all your facilities. It doesn't work that way with the law. It's just not, it just with the way the net metering laws are in place, it's not like you can just have electricity show up over here. If, in a perfect world, that would be nice. We're not there yet, we're not going to be there yet, so that's, that's another thing that's very important, needs to be on each location.
Specifically sized.
Right. Five years ago, I would have told you, we, we would have thought this would have came, where all the counties would put together and have one huge array down in southern Ohio somewhere, and it's just not, it's not going in that direction at all right now.
So how far out, you know, like let's just, I don't know how familiar you are with that area, but obviously the big area is probably behind the sheriff's department apartment, uh, where it's wide open, so how, how far can you run the lines?
I mean, they can be run as far as you want. Um, the actual array itself, because it will be owned by the developer, will be fenced off. Um, also that's just to deter anybody who might try and go in and, you know, safety and things like that. But just to keep it protected, um, and that way there's access to it in case, you know, you guys have a hailstorm and something gets damaged, that kind of thing. The closer the better because it's less expensive, but, um, you know, if you need to put it 100 to 100 yards out, it's not infeasible.
No, that's not a big deal.
No.
If you're talking about, we want to, we want to take this, you know, 10 acres that way or whatever, we need, it needs to be closer.
I would imagine we're, we're a bit of a couple hundred yards.
Okay.
Several hundred yards, and we're still, we're still good with that?
Um, you know, I can't say absolutely, just because I have only seen the facilities from a Google Maps point of view, um, and that would also depend on the developer, who's going to do the construction work. Do I think it's infeasible? No.
Likely, yes, that probably works.
Yeah.
It's another thing, if you're telling me, I got to go a mile.
Yeah.
I mean, we have this field over here and you're going to run, you know, your conduit. Yeah, but a quarter mile's on, you know, it's a, it's a big difference on it.
I think that's feasible.
Yeah.
And the array would always be owned by the developer, or was there a time where that transition would take place?
No, um, and it really depends on what kind of results come back from the RFP, how that works. It might be where the developer owns it for 10 years and then the county takes over ownership. It just depends on what kind of pricing they're willing to offer and what kind of contract they're willing to...
Likely, it's probably going to be a 20-year deal.
The lifespan, um, generally 25 to 30, could be even more than that. Uh, if they're well maintained, which ground mounted arrays are generally easy to maintain.
Right.
Um, they don't degrade that much per year. You're looking at maybe a half percent per year on your output.
You're not posing battery storage, you're just...
That's not really a cost effective option yet.
And you're running the meter backwards if there is a certain...
Yeah. And the idea isn't to generate, like Kurt had said, generate a bunch of extra electricity just because it's not really...
You theoretically may run the meter...
From time to time.
Time to time, you may run it backwards, but it's, that's not the intention of this.
Yeah.
And what's the estimated cost of removing that array?
We, we have not looked at that, that'll be a part of the RFP process. I, I think the intention would be, and at this point, I think the best interest of the county would be to have some kind of 20-year leaseback deal on it, and then you guys take over the array, and at that point, everything's paid for, you're getting free electricity. You don't enjoy the fact that it's losing a half percent of its efficiency in here, but you're getting, you know, free electricity, everything's paid for at that point.
But sometimes they're going to either replace the panels or take them out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't know, no one knows yet, these have not been around. I mean, you know, if you get somebody in here that tells you that they're going to last 50 years, yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it's 25, 35. It looks to us, based on studies that have been shown, that they're lasting in excess of 25, 30 years. But to sit here and tell you the exact time, who knows?
We're talking about the installer maintaining possession for 20 years, and we're talking about it being fenced, and that means obviously on maintenance of the equipment itself, but when I'm looking at pictures, uh, you know, these are separated, there's laws that are needed to be maintained and things around them that would all be, by developers would be taken care of.
It, it's going to be all a part of the actual RFP. There may be a developer that comes back and say, you guys are responsible for maintaining the grass inside. There may be a developer that handles that himself, all that kind of, it's going to, these are all going to be decisions that have to come through the RFP process.
Well, you're going to do one RFP, but is there, obviously, is there opportunity for different developers to take certain areas?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that's so...
That, that's the important thing here, is based on how we see this, uh, with developers, we're going to get some national interest from national developers, but we, you know, you might have a, a local developer in this part of the country, or this part of the state, or, you know, down in the Cincinnati area that is very competitive, and it, it's probably going to be split up between two or three different developers. Wouldn't surprise us at all.
The next step would be for the County Commissioners Association to actually present the opportunity for us to do a, join an RFP, correct?
Yeah, what we would do next is we're, as soon as I get that agreement from Suzanne, I'll forward it right onto you, have your, I assume you'll have your prosecutor check it over, and if you want to participate, that would be the time to, to jump in on board on this. It, it's our intention to have this out on the streets in the December timeframe. It, it, part of that depends right now on how quick we can get everybody and the prosecutors to, to take a look at these materials. Uh, that's a big part of it.
And then once the RFP goes out, assuming that we might join, if we joined it, then once we saw the results of that, we could drop out or stay in?
Mm-hmm, yeah. You're not, you don't have to take it as soon as it comes in, no, certainly not, but I mean, your options will be out there for you to make a, you know, a good decision at that point, if it makes sense for portage or not, to participate in it. And that's not, we're, we're, we've crafted the RFP in such a light that there, some counties will participate, some won't, and that's acceptable.
Because we wouldn't know whether or not we want to participate till we can see some actual...
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you know, I think our experience with working with counties and, and other programs and this, there's going to be a few counties that would do this no matter what, just because it makes sense to them that they want to go that technology. There's going to be a few counties that will, okay, we'll do it if it's not going to cost us any money, we'll do it, and then the vast majority of the counties are, if it's a great idea, if it saves us money, awesome, we're, we're in, that kind of thing. And I don't know where you set that, on that thing yet, but that's, that's where we're seeing the counties drop on it.
And after we, we do receive the results from the RFP, there will be a formal, you know, analysis and recommendation made to each county individually on, here's what it looks like, is it a favorable option in that point? We would never want the county to enter into agreement that's not going to save you money.
And then the CCAO would be handling, obviously with your prosecutor in hand, the actual agreement with the developer, because it's, you're going to need somebody to run some infr, I would think you'd want somebody to run interference on that, whereas to save you time and everything, that's why we're involved.
Do we have other questions here?
Yes, do we have the ability, for example, the hospital was mentioned, that's not actually a county facility, it's a government facility. Uh, we have universities, local schools, do we have the opportunity to see if they would be interested in joining on the RFP, or is this exclusively for county-owned facilities?
This is a county facility, but you tell me what a county facility is, I don't know. I mean, if you, that hospital, if you guys consider that a government county facility, I don't care. It's just like the natural gas and electricity facility program, if you tell me you want this in, it's...
Well, the hospital would use a lot of energy because it's 24/7, but there's a high school close by that would use mostly just during the day, so...
I don't know that we would put a high school in this RFP because it really is very specific to county facilities, but that's not to say that if you wouldn't want us to include them as maybe a subitem in a different RFP structure, that we couldn't do that if it makes sense. I mean, obviously, look at...
They're right next to the hospital is the, is the point, of course, you know, kind of like a facility on Infirmary Road, there's...
Together, yeah.
Well, I mean, and see, that's, that's one of the positive things of a program like this, is maybe they can benefit from something you're doing here. And, uh, I don't think it can be specifically in your RFP, but it can be an RFP next to it at the same time, that goes out at the same time.
And there's no money out of pocket, there's no money that we're going to have to pay, there's no...
Well, I don't want to, I, I'm not going to sit here on the record and say, no, there's no money. I mean, I don't, at this point, the, the intention of this program is that the developers are going to incur the cost of everything on this, and they're going to take advantage of those tax credits. Um, that's, that's where we're at at this point. This, from a financial standpoint in our eyes, it doesn't make sense unless you have them take that 30% tax credit.
That means we have to move fast because the...
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get to, we'll get to that agreement and as quick as I get it back here.
So when we receive the projections on the savings, we study each of our, the, the counties, the whole, we each our facilities on their, their individual usage, we talked about how we're currently at the 30% tax rate, but that is going to 10%, so that could project out what that would do ultimately to our savings.
What, what happens?
If you buy in on the front end, that doesn't impact us...
If you buy, you have to have, this array has to be functioning by the end of 16. If it's not, they lose that 30% tax credit. Now, this is, don't forget, this is not a year-long construction project, it's a few months. These, these bids are, we'll get them back in January. Hopefully, all the contract negotiations between the counties and the developers take place over a three or four month period, and next summer, they're putting these arrays up and plenty of time by the end of 16. That's the intention of, and that's partially, the rush right now is, without that 30%, it just financially, it's not as, not as attractive.
So if it's, if, if, if everything's on board prior to that date, then it is a fixed cost for the solar energy for the length of the contract, 20 years?
Yes and no. And we're saying that because we got to get the responses. We're going to have one RFP, one, one, they're going to, the developer's going to come back and say, this is what we think the best way is, and then we have to sit there and independently evaluate. Some, some developer may come back and say, you're at excellence for the next 20 years. Some other developer may say, you're starting here and we're going to have an escalator, and then we have to, we have to go through all that process, so I can't, I can't be specific on that yet.
Okay.
I have a question.
What part of the process do we know what piece of ground it is that you want to take out there? Do we have to wait until the RFP comes back and a, and a contractor takes a look out there? Or do you guys suppose that you're going to place it behind the dog wardens area or next to his? Do, do we know that yet?
I think a lot of that question is, we're going to suggest locations based on what we've already looked at and what property the county has available to it.
And that'll be what step of the plan?
Right, the RFP process, carry that on.
During that, okay.
Yeah, because it, the, the reality is, I don't want, again, I, one thing that you don't want to do in an RFP is give a developer any reason to perhaps raise a price higher than what it needs to be. So if they come to us with a better idea that, yes, that place is nice, but this location over here makes more sense, we want to have them to have an open opportunity to utilize that.
Other questions, comments? Thank you so much for coming, yes.
Thank you very much.
Hey, 12 minutes early.
Yes, I'm so impressed.
Uh, the other thing is, if you're interested in us looking at your facilities, uh, just give us your natural gas and electric bills for the purchasing program for the CCAO, we'd be happy to look to see if that makes sense for you.
Okay.
Man, this is really...
Say that again, I'm not sure what you're asking.
You know, I started out, we, there's a natural gas and electricity purchasing for county-owned facilities.
Yeah, it belongs to the, the, uh, gas.
Gas, of course, right, but if you want us to look at the electric, we'd be happy to look at that to see if there's opportunity out there for you for additional sales. Okay?
We know you can store gas, so we always thought that was a great thing.
Yeah, that's...
Store electricity.
They're saving, are you doing anything with your electric right now?
Joanne, could you, um, um...
Are, are you doing anything, like your electric for this building, are you guys buying third-party supply at all right now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's something just the CCAO hasn't took program on that.
Right, I found out that after we were already with someone, but when the renewal comes up, we definitely want to be able to...
We'll need, we'll need probably about, you know, nine months or so before that really... Oh, yeah, it takes a while to put everything together.
Sure.
And if, you know, what we want to do is put you in RFP with other county facilities throughout the state, so that's why we're going to, you know, coordinate.
I'll look at that.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Excellent, appreciate it. Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Everybody have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Are you guys going to talk to us about this?
Well, if you want, if you want to have, you know, give us your general thinking of...
I mean, anything's going to lower my electric bill, I mean, I, I just get it, you know, they're saying, well, it's going to save us about 30%.
Yeah.
And save me about $200.
Well, I don't know, I don't know that whole 30%.
You don't get it all off, you get a discount on that.
Yeah, right.
But, uh, Akron Public Schools, uh, they actually used a battery backup system, but they've put solar arrays in several of their facilities over the last three years, and the city of Akron actually has some, so we can reach out to them and...
Ask them what they're saying.
See if they like it, I mean, we don't have to go blind and see what mistakes they made that they would have fixed. Um, I can, I can reach out to them if you want.
That would be good, if you would.
Obviously, it is definitely moving, they're not going to Kansas anymore, and, you know, I mean, they're all over the place. That's why, because they have a company, it was, I want to say it was local in this area, it wasn't necessary right there, but that's why I was wondering. We may have people in this area that have an interest in doing this work. The one I wondered, uh, it's Porches County Airport, does that one of them that we also look at?
It, it could be, it's a little, it'd have to go under the road, I think, I don't know, but they'll look at it, I'm sure.
It's, it's on the backside, I mean, if it's behind juvenile jail, it's just, they've got a runway going north and south and these, so I mean, it's really...
They probably don't use a lot of electricity, I don't know, but it certainly could be included.
What about the Shalerville Water Plant or the Streetsboro Waste Water Plant?
Well, Streetsboro's pretty far away, but she was just...
We're talking for individual, separate, for individual.
Oh, for separate, of course, yeah. The exciting thing is that CCAO is paying for this Palmer, a company to explore the ideas, and then we can decide later if it's to our, they're going to give us their opinion as well, as to whether or not it's worthwhile, but it's certainly something to look into. And wastewater and water is a very energy consumptive.
Yeah, we use four and a half million kilowatt hours of Streetsboro law in a year. We use 1.4 at Shaler'sville, Franklin's 1.4, but there's no land unless we could do something with the city of Kent, water plants right there.
Would there be room at the Streetsboro plant to?
Well, it's cut trees down, so you can sacrifice trees for other green energy. There's some swamp area in there too, but I'm sure that you can fit something in there. Definitely at the Shaler'sville site, there's room. And they'd be happy, I know my water dish would be happy to not have to mow.
Oh, yeah.
Four, five, seven acres, whatever it ends up being.
Franklin, we could share with Kent maybe.
Possibly, yeah, and I know their water plant uses a lot of energy. Well, in your office on Bluestone, I don't know 44 now, because you want your, you want to tie your house in there?
Five hundred foot.
That's a long drive.
Wait, wait, hey, if, if you're, if you're hitting the curve here, you know ODOT's putting in an office going right there on the other side of it, so.
You know, we spend an enormous amount of money on things like energy, so if there are ways that we can save, that would be really good. Yeah, the other thing we waste a lot of money on, I think, is mowing lawns. And is there some way we could plant something that wouldn't grow very tall to take the place of lawns? So we wouldn't have to have mowing all the time?
And go back to Flurry. I think really natural growth.
Yeah, I was thinking like pakicendra, pakicendra, or maybe there's a short variety of grass, I don't know.
Like a floor of rosewood.
What?
Before we hold it for a rose, a deer like that, it's the, the predator.
It's just considered an invasive species.
Well, we can't do invasive species, we have it all over the county. So think about it, because.
I mean, I really wanted to do, when I first got here, just with the electrical and whatnot, I thought about putting up one of them small wind turbines, and we were not, it wasn't even feasible because of the airport right there.
Yeah, and also it's very, very expensive, those turbines, and they're huge, yeah.
Well, because I said Buffalo, and they're, you know.
They're all over in West, yeah.
Starting about, almost to the Ohio border and all the way to Buffalo, there, you see them all over.
Yeah, we have some in Cleveland. They were going to do a lot of them out in Lake Erie, I don't know if they're developing that yet.
I think it's, I mean, even the solar panels, I think that stuff's pretty neat, especially if we're not doing anything with the land.
Well, the sun is free.
There's a house in Southfield on the corner of Arcadia and Congress Lake Road. I've gone by there a couple of times, and on one side of the house, he's got all these panels. But on the other side, there's nothing, so I don't know how that works, you just need it on one side?
Probably the south side.
Oh, okay, okay.
It sounds exciting, we'll have to wait and see if it's going to be feasible.
If they can make that work, then what else, what's that?
I'm wondering if we shouldn't inform them about the Shaler'sville and Streetsboro permits.
She has the bill.
She does.
But if all she did was look on a Google Earth image, she might not know what the bounds of the property are.
Yeah.
And Streetsboro, I think we had 80 acres, I think in Shaler'sville, we had like 120.
I'm like, you're going to email her, Melissa?
Yes.
I'd be happy, I can pull it all up.
Okay, if you would, that would be helpful, yeah. So if you think of any other questions, let them know as well, so she can get them.
Do we want to, do we own the hospital land?
Yes.
We want to look at including them, and they're high users.
I think we should include whatever we can.
Since it's our land, I, we.
Yeah, and then when they do the analysis, once the RFPs are returned, they can advise us which projects would be worthwhile and which we should.
So we, we need to read a chart of the hospital to get their, essentially, their bills.
It is county land, so that would make it eligible. And certainly, the hospital would love it if we could figure out a way to save them energy.
Does this need to be signed today, Deb?
If you are willing to do it.
If, do you have any worry for mowing on this?
What is this?
Isn't it the lease for the hospital?
This is Melissa.
She gets a little.
Oh, I thought we did this already. Didn't we do this already?
We haven't talked about it yet.
Is it on our agenda?
No, it came in late yesterday afternoon, but I forwarded it to you last night, maybe you read it last night.
Okay, should we put it out for Tuesday, is that soon enough?
He says either today, or if you don't want to sign, you can do it Tuesday.
Let's do it Tuesday when we're in New Zealand. That'll give us time also to look at. Thanks so much for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Who was missing? The sheriff? No, in the sheriff's office was here. Was it, was that gentleman from the sheriff's?
That was the juvenile.
Oh, juvenile, okay.
He's the maintenance director.
Yeah, so Deb, you can't use one of those clickers with this?
Yeah, we have it, I actually don't, it was working, that's what she had, she just didn't know how to use it.
Okay.
So we're having the investment advisory next.
And Vicki, you can go, because you are the alternate.
I can go?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the alternate, we take it with faith.
I'm going to go run today and go to.
Did you hurt your arms, have you ever been?
I've, I've sprained my wrist, my, my dog was on a leash, and the cat, he saw a cat, almost took me down. I didn't fall, but it just twisted my wrist, and oh.
Now we know your little puppy is taking over.
You know, he's not so little anymore.
Imagine her with her dog with a cat right there.
You know what?
She'd be gone.
I don't know how she does it, I really, because her dogs are monsters, she's got both of them.
Yes.
She's been beat up by them in the past.
Yeah, I've always had cats, I don't have one now, but when we moved, first moved into the house, we lived in for many years, I looked out the backyard and here was the squirrel chasing my cat across the lawn. So my cat wasn't very brave.
Do you want to reset the program comes up?
Uh, they're going to be here in one minute.
Okay.
You're welcome to take a break if you want.
Oh, I'm okay, I just, I need to go lay down.
We just want to, we just want to get it done.
You had a little letter that the board gave today, wasn't it, Jeff?
Yes.
So his information's behind that, his, his.
They're voting on the tax.
Is today's thing?
Or he's out this year.
No, we're going to wait till Tuesday.
Okay, Kathleen Klein is in the office this morning for economic, or legislative. That's what it was this morning, so I didn't know if you have to reconsider or not.
We're going to consider it for certain on Tuesday, unless, well, I'm, I think she'll be here.
Did you get a chance to read the Tea Party thing on, yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
I don't know how it'll fly, but interesting.
Well, it's, you know, they're welcome to come to all the meetings, they're public meetings.
Well, I mean, the, their version of the oversight committee.
Oh, I know, yeah, but as I say, we appointed the Oversight Committee, and they're welcome to go to all the meetings. And we appointed Jeff Crawford from the Tea Party to serve on it.
Oh, okay.
Or if we haven't, we plan to do that.
As one of the.
So there'll be a representative there, and then the meetings will be open, so anyone can attend. They're also, all of the information, financial information will be online, so they can see that.
All right, handsome, I can see it as adding another layer, because you would have this, you would, the board is still the appropriating authority, still the budgeting authority, but you'd have this layer that people would actually have to make presentations to. It might force people to make a more detailed analysis of their needs and make that presentation rather than. Because half the time you get in here and it sounds like a free card Monte game when they're making a, you know.
Yeah, well, it's a good idea, but you can't have two committees, it can only be one. And you can't have 15 people on it either, I don't think.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good, not staying.
Not sticking around for the investment committee? That's the best part.
Unless you have some good investment advice.
Yeah, right.
Don't.
Don't invest.
That's my advice, don't.
Spend it.
Have fun.
We're doing a little better than the mattress, but not a whole lot.
It's good time for people to buy homes because.
Yeah.
They're not getting any interest, and the interest is low, so.
Give me, look, cold medicine.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I'm, yeah, I've got, I mean, season's changed.
There's something, there's something out there. Are you getting, are you getting sick?
No, I'm exhausted.
I have to do everything afterward, but, over there. And I'm, there's a septic system workshop at 6 o'clock at the Maplewood Career Center, if you're enjoying me for that. Be heading out there. That's, that's kind of you.
Not a bad idea. And if, if my voice goes during the middle of a tune.
Is Maureen coming in today, or she?
She isn't, no. Well, we'll call the investment review. Let's do it. And if you'd like to begin.
All right, we're called to order then, and may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23 meeting? Please.
I make a motion to approve the June 23, 2015 meeting minutes.
Play second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. And with no further delay, Debbie Newman from Meter has our investment review for this quarter.
Well, you know, I, I guess, more of the same, and, and more of the same really is been a very volatile quarter. And most of that volatility has actually been from global issues rather than issues here in the United States. I think we've all seen what's, and you can't kind of get away from it anymore. You know, we've had situations in China here recently, you know, Europe is still in a recessionary period, keeping their interest rates lower by doing quantitative easing like we had done.
You know, Deb, you've got to admit.
Come on up and join us.
You've got to admit, to the average person, it doesn't make a whole difference, the market's up 300, and then the very next day, it's down 300. I mean, it's not a logical thing.
No, you know, I mean, I feel the same way.
It's very uncomfortable, and, and I think sometimes that, that bit of volatility even adds to the volatility. You know, I think the panic and that sort of, you know, that mentality, and I hate to even say it, but sometimes I think, you know, all these talking heads out there.
Oh, I, I do see it.
Kind of bring it, they, they, they kind of.
Situation where you sort of self-reinforce what's happening.
It does, it does, I think it sometimes kind of, it sort of snowballs it a, a bit. You know, and we've seen this in the past, and even what would happen in Greece earlier this year. Okay, Greece is a really small, small country, and yet people made that sound like the world was ending because Greece was defaulting on debt. And it is, it's such a minute part of, you know, the European, you know, community, and on a global basis, very small. But I think anymore, the, you know, it, it's nice to have, you know, that people kind of follow the markets a little bit, but yet it becomes a little bit overblown sometimes.
And during this recessionary time, the market has been quite healthy and.
Uh-huh.
And growing, so.
It has.
If, if we're a layperson, it is a little confusing.
Yeah.
Well, and from a bond market perspective, it actually, if the stock market goes down a little bit, that probably benefits the market for this kind of product, right?
It does.
As a general rule, because these are considered to be safer, you know, less volatile things. The fact that the overall trajectory still is very good for the stock market, I think, is why, part of why, I mean, you're probably going to tell us that, but part of why we're, you know, we're seeing our own bond rates kind of flatlining where they are.
If, if not going down here.
Yeah.
You know, the Fed met last week, I think the market had anticipated that Janet Yellen was going to raise that Fed funds rate, that short-term borrowing rate, and she did not. And so what happened after that meeting, along with what's happened in China, which brought our rates down a bit, then she does not raise those short-term interest rates, and her concerns were really the global situation, and that inflation is so low. And those two situations, of course, right after she spoke, interest rates, along with stock market, took it on the chin, and rates kind of came down here again. And for ourselves, with, with portfolios, what it does too is since interest rates did drop a considerable amount, it made it so that a lot of these agencies to start calling bonds, because they could reissue this, the debt that they have out there at lower interest rates. So unfortunately, it makes portfolios volatile also. So, you know, it's a mixed bag right now. Just so that you know, we've been a little on the patient side, instead of just, because we think a lot of this does get a little overblown, we've been patient to put things back to work, rather than just jumping right back in after things get called. We're a little more patient, and before we actually start to reinvest at this point. So we still have a little bit, like Brad and I were talking, we still have a little bit of funds to put back to work right now from some recent calls, only because we want to wait for the better opportunities before we just jump back in.
Well, and, and so Debbie, you know, I've noticed, kind of since I've been here, that our securities distribution has kind of skewed a bit more into the callable section. Is that just what the market bears at this point, because there aren't a whole lot of, the non-callables are more stable and more reliable, right?
They are, and they, but they have no yield advantage.
That's the thing at this point.
You know, that's the problem right now. Excuse me, supply of agencies is low to start with, and the non-callable ones are really right on top of treasury yields, which are very low. So to, to pick up that incremental yield, the callables are better. And what we found is, even though a lot of these have been called, we've been able to get in very close to the same kind of levels when we've gone to reinvest again. So we're not concerned with it, we think it still is the, the better, you know, way of doing things at this point. You know, the usual things, you know, and I'm going to just skip through this real quick, you know, that the Fed's always looking at, you know, GDP. Again, is still, you know, pretty volatile on page four, you know, this graph keeps going up and down here, you know, once you get past this down, you know, point of the recession, we're not seeing a real consistent growth rate out there. It kind of is up and down and up and down, so I think the Fed would like to see that be a little bit more consistent with a growth rate. Usually after you come on a recession, it is, it kind of does more of a upward climb, not a up and down and up and down effect. So they're a little concerned with that, you know, the growth rate out there right now. It's, it's doing fine, but yet not quite where we want to be.
So that's, you know, looking at the rest of the year, this is probably likely to take another dip, right? If I'm reading the pattern correctly, it looks like the December.
It most likely will.
Period seems to be when we move down a bit over time.
That's where expectations are, yes. On page five, inflation, you know, the Fed, and we followed the personal consumption expenditure. Fed likes to see that around 2%, that shows you have an economy that's moving forward, is growing. Unfortunately, we're only at 1.2% right now. A lot of that does have to do with oil prices continuing to drop here, because that also puts pressure on goods and services out there when those oil prices drop. You know, year over year, oil prices are down 35%, and it's a big number.
And the personal consumption always goes up towards the end of the year because of the holidays. So if this continues, this trend we have will continue, it will probably be higher.
It probably will not be, and, and, and this is, this is an unusual year. You're right that it normally should, Kathleen, it should go up at the end of the year, but because of, if we put this crude oil price chart down at the bottom for a reason, is because that personal consumption expenditure usually lags where oil is, prices are. And as you can see, the oil prices continue are dropping here, so that probably is going to bring that down here at the end of the year rather than up.
Why would consumer consumption rise and fall the same as crude oil? That makes no sense to me.
I would agree with that, but it, I mean, it tracks, obviously, looking at the numbers pretty closely.
It does, and, and only because it makes goods cheaper. And the personal consumption expended.
Transportation costs and that kind of stuff.
Correct. And so it does unfortunately bring that down.
So there's more overall consumption, but it's at a lower price point, therefore it kind of balances out and.
Correct, so it doesn't add back into inflationary type of numbers. On, on page six, you know, unemployment, you know, we're at 5.1% on a national average. You know, you'd think that should be a good number, but unfortunately, as we've talked in the past, this blue line on here, which is that participation rate, continues to drop here also. So that skews that whole, the whole formula that they have out there for unemployment anymore.
I think, I don't know, I think Forge County is 4.7.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we still have that kind of to deal with, a year ago, we were at 6.3%, so it should be a better number, but realistically, when you've got less people, it just skews all those numbers out there. The one thing that we've talked about in the past is that U6 number, which is that unemployment rate that includes the people that are only working part-time but want to work full-time. And that's actually at two, at 10.3%, so that still is on the rather high side.
I can understand how you get the unemployment rate, but I'm not sure how you get the participation rate, how do you do that?
The participation rate actually is all the people that are either working or want to be working between the ages of 16 and 65.
But how do we know those that want to, that?
They have to be applying.
They have to be applying.
They have to be applying, that's a typical requirement, that's the easiest requirement.
So some people drop out of the participation figure.
They will after a while.
Or they'll drop out of that. Or they'll drop out of the employment figure while they still could be, right?
Looking for work.
Yeah.
When you quit looking for work, that's what drags the participation rate down.
Yeah.
That's why it's concerning that it keeps falling, because it means there may be people wanting to work that have given up.
I was wondering if-
Although, yeah, sorry.
I was wondering if there was an effect because we have baby boomers that are retiring.
That also has a-
It does have an effect, you know, I mean, I think we've discussed this, you know, really, in this nation, we've got 10,000 people every day that turn 65. It's a big number. You know, so knowing that too, it does, it does have an effect there also. But one of the reasons too, and as was mentioned, was the fact that the new jobs that have been created since this past recession are not the jobs that used to be created. The manufacturing jobs have not been recovered from the recession. They are not being, you know, they're not growing out there. The construction jobs are not growing anymore. The jobs that are growing are more in retail, more service-oriented jobs, a little bit lower-paying type of jobs. And a lot of people that lost their jobs during the recession, this past recessionary period, don't want those jobs. They, you know, they want their old jobs, which just aren't available anymore because this, either technology has taken over, or those industries have cut back on their employment. So unfortunately, we do have a little bit of that that also contributes to that participation rate coming down, because that element of people out there that still want those jobs aren't able to find those jobs.
I mean, in the past, it looks like over the past four years or so, we've been fairly stable at that 62, 62 and a half rate for the participation rate, and the unemployment rate has dipped significantly, so that's a good thing. But you're right, it's not the jobs that-
Yeah.
People want necessarily, or historically would have been working with the benefits of anything else.
No.
And those jobs where we really need people, we sometimes can't find them because of the lack of qualification.
And I have heard that, I think a lot of people haven't been retrained for the new wave of jobs out there. You know, on page seven is Ohio. I always like to put the map in here, you know, we're at 5% unemployment here in Ohio. We have the same story. I mean, if we had that same graph on here, you would see the same thing. Ohio's participation rate has dropped quite a bit also. One thing that I've noticed here just in the past couple quarters actually, is a lot of these counties that were on the eastern part of Ohio had dropped down with their unemployment rates for quite a while. And now that oil prices have dropped so much, a lot of those were doing the fracking out there, and it is not at all cost, you know, good for them anymore to be doing the fracking out there. So a lot of those jobs are stopping right now. In fact, I was at Medina County the other day, and a couple people mentioned that they are aware that, a lot of them have just left. They've started things and just left, because it's not at all profitable for them to be drilling anymore. In fact, I think I'd heard that for it to be profitable for them, oil prices have to be above $50 a barrel, and right now we're, you know, 40-ish.
And that shows no sign of getting better for the long term-
No.
Because of what's happening with the oil pressing countries and everything else, right?
No, not at all.
So.
And on page eight is just kind of the story that we talked about a little bit. You know, on the shorter end of the market, interest rates had come up here a little bit. This is as of the end of August, so it doesn't reflect just the current stuff and everything that just happened here. But one thing that's put pressures on our rates, because once you get past kind of the three-year area, interest rates actually, over the year, have dropped, you know, only because of the pressure of, you know, foreign nations putting money into our US Treasuries. And that probably will continue to be that way, despite whatever the Fed decides they're going to do on those short-term interest rates. And, you know, then I'm going to just take it, you know, I think we've discussed pretty much the next page. On page 11, the one thing that I wanted to show you was your portfolio a year ago versus where we are here today. (cough) Excuse me. And, you know, you'll see that there, it looks like there's a little bit less of assets in this, because we've got about $3 million worth of call bonds recently that we haven't put back to work yet. So that would be put back into there. But even despite that, you can see your average yield had gone from 1.09 to 1.29. And despite that there's even less assets today, the interest income from the portfolio is still higher, even with that 3 million that hasn't been put back to work. So the story is still good. We still think it's very important, and as you can see, we continue to ladder these maturities out, so that if there is any real material change in the economy or sentiment out there, we can always be readjusting the portfolio at that point. But right now, we think the way we have been structuring it is exactly how we want to continue to structure it. And one thing too, that I mentioned to Brad too, if you look down at the very bottom, the portfolio allocation, one thing that has increased as far as allocation of assets are concerned, is some of these brokerage CDs. I know they're a little bit more work, because they, you know, they have to be under $250,000, because that gives us FDIC insurance on them. But they have been paying considerably higher than the agency market right now. So we have added a bit more into that part of the market right now.
And why does insured gets more?
Pardon me?
Did you say the insured FDIC gets more?
Yes, we have added to that part of the market.
Safety benefits.
Well, you know, yeah, I mean, it gives you safety benefit, plus it's giving us more income.
And the US agencies, which is the largest portion of our investments, are those not insured?
They are.
Sort of, kind of.
Sort of, kind of, yeah.
So they're backed by the pseudo-full faith and credit, right? Do you want to go into that? (laugh) It's a little complicated, but yeah.
The government would never let those agencies go under. How's that?
It's Fannie and Freddie and the farm folks, and it's, it's the great big clearing analysis.
It's the big housing.
It's called paper security rather than real security, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they are. Not a Treasury level of security, but very close.
And what are the others?
The others, we have a little bit of municipal debt in the portfolio.
See back for anything is one that we have.
Yeah.
And I tried to look for more Dayton Metro Library, but there aren't many.
No.
We have a couple in there.
And part of that, we had bought, we had bought some of those a while back, because for a while ago, the municipal debt was paying a little bit higher. And now the markets have changed around, and they really aren't paying very high, so we have not been adding to it.
I know for laypeople, for us who are investing, the municipal and library debts are good because it's tax-free. I mean-
For you as a county?
Yeah, but for the county, that doesn't-
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I did list in here only because, this just to show you the volatility we've had in the portfolio in the quarter. These are all purchased here just in this past quarter. And part of this is just because we've had a lot of bonds that were called with all this up and down of interest rates here in the past quarter.
I feel like I get an email from you every day. We haven't quite, but it seems that way.
Yes, I know.
Normally, you wouldn't want to call them one, but now we do it because we get a better interest rate, correct?
Well, what happens with the calls is the agencies that issue the debt, if interest rates have dropped, it's to their benefit to call these securities, so they can reissue that debt at a lower rate.
I understand that.
Yeah.
From our perspective, I would think if we got a good interest rate, we would not want them to be callable, but we do it because the callable bonds will give us a little bit more.
They give us a lot more bump of the rate.
A lot more?
Mm-hmm.
Because they don't want to get caught even, so.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last pages are just the portfolio today here, so, like I said, we-
I've never been able to figure out where this money comes from and why we have it for so long. I mean, it's-
Well, it's, yeah, it's, go ahead, Doc.
It's never the same dollar.
Right.
Right.
But it's, you know, we maintain roughly a $6 to $8 million balance just in the general fund, but that money is all going to be spent by the end of the year. But as it's being spent, new money's coming in at the same time, so it's never the same dollar bill, but-
It's not like we've got the squirrel to waste.
With the flow, it always happens. The other large portion is developmental disabilities. They actually have almost 20 million plus.
What do you mean, what do you mean we have 20 million?
In their reserve.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought they were always struggling.
One of the, one of the agencies has very large balances. But then you add up, I mean, we have 100 funds.
Yeah, that's a hard concept for me to get a handle on, because like we have, these are invested for a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
So the amount of money that we have in our total portfolio is really money that's out there that's invested.
Correct.
And I understand that money keeps coming and going, but evidently not this money keeps going, because it's fixed.
Well, this is seed corn, right? You know, to use the farming analogy, so.
No, I don't know what that means.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I forgot, city can't, my bad. So, yeah, I mean, this is, you can, this is what is there to back up, you know, kind of longer-term sorts of things.
It's some sort of pocket of money that we keep, and then we, it comes and goes, but this stays pretty much.
Yeah, so for instance, if we needed to do something, like I made, we were talking on the way up here, like I made your project, like for instance, buying new voting machines, is that was part of my former life and something I know that you have to consider.
You're not coming from there.
Have to consider at some point. But you could issue debt, I mean, you could rearrange the portfolio in such ways to have more cash reserve.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, that's, that's an example, probably poorly stated, but-
We're expecting the state to pick up 85%.
Have you heard that 85%?
Just a little.
Of the poll books, yeah. We would hope for that on the machines. Keep our fingers crossed.
Also on the machines.
We're hoping, but it's-
Keep your fingers crossed. I'll pray for you on that one, and us collectively. That would be phenomenal.
The county commissioners, kind of, I was at their meeting last Friday, kind of were very optimistic about it being the same proportion as the vote books.
That would be great. Yeah, I mean, it needs, certainly, there was that report that came out, you know, last week about the aging machines, and in Allen County, did you hear that anecdote? They use zip disks to back up their, their stuff, and they had to buy new ones, and they, new ones. So they opened them, and he had an expired coupon in there from 1999.
Oh, Brad.
That's how old the technology that some counties in the state are using is.
Oh, my.
That the backup material had a, brand-new backup material had an expired coupon from 1999 in it. So, yeah, I mean, the need is coming, and I'm hoping, like you are against hope, that someone at the federal or state level sees the light on that.
I'm optimistic.
Yeah.
But we have to up front the money. Because we need them.
Yeah.
We have to up front all of it.
Yeah, I mean, well, the technology, and you know, the board, I will give them a ton of credit, especially faith, in thinking ahead and saying, we need to squirrel away as many of these machines as we possibly can. You know, so they've got, I think, 100 in reserve that they can bring up to, bring up to speed and cycle in as things break down, which is incredibly, you know, beneficial. But again, that's a Band-Aid, and you don't want to be doing too much Band-Aid.
No, not when we're talking about votes.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, a 1% fail rate is way, way, way too many.
We can't have any failure rate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we getting a good use out of the million we set aside?
I will see, I wondered if you were going to ask about that. So just by way of update, this, we're sort of moving out of portfolio update now, but as far as that program is concerned, we've seen a pretty precipitous slowdown. I'm thinking in part because of the season we're in. So we're sort of getting out of the building season now, and we kind of got into the building season a little late, because we didn't launch the program until July. So we've used about 15% of our allocation or so at this point that's dedicated to projects. All of those folks have up to a year to get us receipts. We have had a couple that have come in and completed everything, and so they're, they're ready to go. You know, I'm thinking, when we set this up, we decided we were going to have that stay out there as a rolling kind of availability, and then we would look at it again next summer. I'm thinking we're going to see another uptick in, in the spring, and that's actually part of why I'm going to the Septic workshop tonight, is to remind folks, hey, you know, by the way, if you have to do a project, this is out here, you might want to look at it.
One of the problems about getting projects done is that it's almost impossible to get a builder. They're all busy. Everybody's busy.
Yeah, well, you know, the weather's good when it's good, and it's kind of busy when that happens, and then in the winter, there'll be nothing, so.
Do you have those pamphlets to pass out tonight?
I do, I've got the brochures. I'm also starting to schedule meetings with Realtors, because that's another group whom this could be a relevant topic. I've got one set in Garrettville next week, and I'm trying to get with some of the other larger agencies to talk to them, because every now and then they do come into the hive.
They have Realtor Association maybe.
Yeah, and I've had some preliminary conversations with, with those folks. That would be good, that kind of touches more independent agents. Like the big shops like Jack Cole or Howard Hanna, kind of, I mean, they participate, but they, not everybody goes, you know. You'd be, do better to reach out to them individually, so. We're working on it, it's not, you know, all else being equal, I would prefer we were further along in dedicating that fund than we are, but it's new, yeah.
Takes a while, yeah.
So we'll see. And I think we're, for what it's worth, ahead of where Summit County was at this stage in the life of their program. So, so it goes. Well, I don't know about that, but, so we're working on it, so.
That's true. Thank you.
I do have one other little announcement to make to all of you.
Yes.
I am going to be retiring later on this year.
Oh, true.
So I just wanted to mention to you, it's been a pleasure working with the county here for the past 10 years, and it's been an honor, and enjoyed working with each and every one of you.
We have shoes to fill, so what are we going to do without you?
We have some wonderful people at our, you know, you've met some of the other people within our organization, and you know-
Is Jason going to be stepping up to do your stuff for a little while in the interim?
I think so. You may be seeing Jason here for a while. He's been, they've been looking to try to hire somebody, and as much as the big boss thought it was going to be easy to find somebody to fit in my shoes, he wasn't able to find people here yet. He didn't realize it was going to be quite as, as hard as it was to kind of find someone. So, but I think Jason probably will be, you know, who you'll be. So mid-November, thank you.
Can we get you a little guy, I was going to ask when?
So what are you going to do till you're retired?
Well, unfortunately, initially, part of my decision is a little bit earlier than I expected. I'd had some health issues this past year, and kind of need to get that taken care of and get myself healthy again, and, you know, move forward a little bit then, and, you know, taking care of aged parents and all, you know, all the things that kind of start happening at this age too, you know, so. Got parents that are in their mid-90s, and, you know, kind of try and take care of them, and try to take care of myself, and it just seemed like the right thing to be doing, so, but.
So we want to thank you for all the great help that you-
Oh, thank you.
And insight that you provided us, and wish you all the best as you take on these new adventures.
And I think I've got your personal cell phone, so.
You do, you do. I know you do, Nikki.
You're not too far away.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Do you want me to accept the report Jane has here?
Uh, I don't know, do we typically do, I don't remember, honestly, to tell you the truth, Deb, but we can go for that. Can I have a motion to accept that?
Uh, yes, so moved, I know, we didn't.
Is it just the chair last day retiring? Nobody's, you're a placement?
You second him down, I assume? Okay. All in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, and may have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, Lee.
Okay, you will.
If you want me to...
It's been a pleasure. I think you've been really wonderful having you.
Thanks, Brian.
We're spoiled now.
Now you got to talk to the boys.
All right. I'll see you later.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. We're ready for you, Janet.
Thank you. I sent you up, you know, Brian did talk to Janet Kovacs, but we didn't know that she wanted to do anything there or not, but we thought you ought to have just her opinions. I'm only here for the ITS, and I'm interested in carpet and some paint, and only one room that needs carpeted. I think Janet misunderstood about replacing the carpet on her floor, because it's newer than any of it that we have in this building. It might need clean.
Is the room number six-eleven, is that what that is for you, Janet? That's the room number for carpet?
Yes.
Yes. That's the one back in the corner that the machine was in, and we currently have an air conditioner in there that's no longer in working order, and it needs to be removed.
And it's been, it has been in employee's office since its inception, since we moved there back in nineteen ninety-one, but we would like to...
Make it look more professional, because that's what we'd like to have. And if Janet wants to do hers, we'd like to do our things and take care of it, if you don't mind.
I do know that...
And I didn't know if you wanted to have an interim director working improvements or not. You know?
Yeah.
Because you're going to be higher than director.
I do know from talking with Janet that her request for carpet was based on the fact that if you go down and look at her office area, there's different colors of carpet now it's kind of all come together. So, that was part of her request. But we actually recently had maintenance clean our, some existing carpet in one of the rooms, and they did such a great job that after we saw the outcome of that...
You didn't need carpet?
No, we're just going to need the carpet cleaned in the other rooms, and...
We only need the carpet where the tile is, because of what's in there in, in an office, you know, for an individual. You know, have you ever got off the sixth floor in the elevator and see how dark it is?
Oh, yes.
I don't understand how it was ever that dark in the beginning, unless we've covered up something by what they put in that wall or something.
Yeah, there's a wall.
Because it is awful dark. You know, and we have different salesmen, and, you know, some...
What about the, the area where the storage, where you have your storage, is that kind of cleaned out now?
You talking about the center?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's different.
No, it's, it's, we have another load that solid waste is going to pick up tomorrow.
Okay.
We've got over three hundred PCs that we've been replacing, so, I mean, everything comes back there, but we've cleaned out room six-seventeen, and we cleaned up room six-oh-eight. So, the, the core area, you know, once we get all these upgrades done, we hope to have that pretty much cleaned out, too.
Well, we've got all the stuff coming down from the courthouse here eventually, since they started paying Courtview again, and we were able to get onto that and get the upgrade done on that. See, I don't know if you guys understand all, what's going on behind the scenes, and you shouldn't have to. You know, that's why Brian's here, we're here, we'll do whatever we can, because we want it done, too.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh, everybody, I think, wants this.
Oh, we're tired. I mean, it's taken too long. Way too long.
Do you have this list, Joanne? There are presenting tools.
Here, now you do. Of the improvements ITS would like, and then Janet threw in some of hers.
Okay. And, you know, the coroner's office is in really horrible shape.
Why don't you move that in?
We're already working on that over there, so I, I, what do you want me to do, just write it up?
Well, we just want to keep all of your minds, so that when, when Maureen comes back, we can discuss all of that, because there's so, so many requests.
Did you guys look at another place for them? Did you ever talk to the coroner and their help?
Well, yes, we did, and the coroner likes the idea of it being a house, separate from...
And a twenty thousand dollar roof and other things, right?
Well, I mean...
I don't know if the basement's still leaking. Probably is off and on.
No, it isn't anymore. But, anyway, so we can have, in our discussions, all of the needs and wants, and figure out what we can do now with our current budget, and what has to be done maybe another year.
That's why we're just asking for little things, like that day I came in here, because, you know, I've got a new girl down there, you know, and you hate to put them in closets.
Well, it's not just our employees, which is bad for our employees, it's also bad for the public that comes down.
And we have a lot of public coming into that floor.
Yeah.
G I, G I S is always printing things, and people coming in for stuff from G I S.
Yeah.
That whole area is, is sad.
I looked at this, and it didn't seem like anything that was terribly expensive.
We do need a couple new chairs. Sean had a chair that was awful, you know, and Brian's got one that's awful.
Are they on the list, chair?
No, well, that's...
That's minimal, you know?
We didn't put that in the renovation list, but...
Okay.
So, you know, what can be done, what can't be done, we'd like to be done. If it can all be done, that's great, you know, but if some of, if it all can't be done, then whatever's feasible and, you know, can be done...
We have to try to figure out...
Is it moving forward?
What we have in our current maintenance budget, if it can be utilized, and what needs to be put in the next budget.
Yeah, Joanne knows, because there is some, I love, we've got some stuff. And Brad can quit, and, oh, Todd here, can quit boarding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all we wanted.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'd appreciate anything.
Thank you.
We're not for wasting money either.
We know that.
We are.
Yeah, we know.
While I'm up here, Kelly Jo had asked me to post the Megan Griffiths...
We'll keep this chair for Brian.
Megan Griffiths positioned the budget of finance, and she asked me to post it with the CPA Association, which I think...
Yeah, right.
Do you happen to know any contact information?
Well, you know.
Do you know?
Or if you go online, Ohio Society of CPAs, is that what she's wanting?
It's, it's whatever was talked about, and this one is meeting with her. She's in the CPA Association.
You can either Google it and get, you know...
I don't know if you have, like, a specific name or whatever that you know of that you can connect.
You know what, I can ditch you a name, okay?
Yeah.
Just send it to you. And if you put a date, yeah, I think they'll do it for free for us, but I'm not sure.
I could find out. Yeah, absolutely.
And if it's very expensive, just come back and let us know.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just didn't know if you, if nobody thinks, where's this chair?
It'd be great if we could get a CPA's.
Is it? Oh. What happened to our chairs?
Somebody took one of our chairs and gave us that one.
Oh.
Boy, now we know who the villain is.
Okay, now we want Joanne.
Okay. And then we'll be done, that's right. I'll be glad when today is over. I'm worried.
Okay, me, too.
Did you sign everything yet?
Gosh, I don't think I did.
You could do it tomorrow morning if you didn't want to do it.
You don't want, I might do that.
Okay.
Are you going to be in the Rock, I think?
Yes.
I've got a couple of calculations that you need to sign. Why don't you look at, you have a look.
Okay. Are they to be done tomorrow?
I can do it this afternoon if you...
No, I meant, are they being presented?
Saturday.
Oh, Sa, yeah, I'll be in tomorrow for sure. Yeah. I won't be in all day, but I'll be in some other day. Where is my? Oh, here it is. All right, you. Hi, Janet. We should alert it you here next.
That's okay. That's not a problem. I knew I was coming sometime today.
Yeah.
All right. There's so much, okay, first, this is for you. Okay, and I've...
Okay.
Um, there's some additions to my resolutions today, and I, I am sorry that it's, they're coming so late, but part of it is, has to do with the sheriff's office and water resources. So, when we get to the end of number six, I'll explain a little bit more to you, okay? All right.
Do you want to begin with your resolutions?
Yes.
Motion to enter into a maintenance as for agreement for sanitary sewer improvements for the Malloy Road sanitary, sanitary force main extension, Frater Project in Brentville Township for water resources.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to declare obsolete and dispose of the Portage County personal property title to the Portage County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to designate and authorize an official to submit an Ohio Public Works Commission Infrastructure Program Grant application and execute contracts for the Portage County Engineer for the Peck Road and Lovers Lane Resurfacing Projects in Ravenna Township.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? It's interesting, it's an official, do you have someone in mind?
It's authorizing Nikki to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they take the language right from the, the grant.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to designate and authorize an official to submit an Ohio Public Works Commission Infrastructure Program Grant application and execute contracts for the Portage County Engineer for the Newton Falls Road Resurfacing Project in Charleston Township.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to designate and authorize an official to submit an Ohio Public Works Commission Infrastructure Program Grant application and execute contracts for the Portage County Engineer for the Newton Falls Road Resurfacing Project in Charleston Township.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to designate and authorize an official to submit an Ohio Public Works Commission Infrastructure Program Grant application and execute contracts for the Portage County Engineer for the Birdie Leg Road Resurfacing Project in Franklin Township.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to declare obsolete and authorize sale of equipment by public auction title to the Portage County Board of Commissioners.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? What equipment are we...
It's that whole list, it's in that resolution body. They're, basically, they're all the old vehicles, and then...
Are they from the motor pool?
They're, yeah, they've been at the motor pool, yeah.
We have all these obsolete vehicles at the motor pool?
Right, and those are ones that they take pieces and parts off of to, like, maybe put another car into service and things like that. So, now we're getting to a point where we need to dispose of the bones, a lot.
So, just jump, we just take the junkyard in, or what do we do?
No, we take them actually down to the Edinburgh Auction, and we get some money out of them.
Even if they're missing pieces and parts?
Yeah, sometimes people will buy them and fix them up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay, um, I second, did I second the motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Here's the couple of latecomers that I have. The first one is to authorize, enter into an agreement for water resources. This is roof repair, actually, the replacement at the Shaler'sville Water Plant. And the reason I'm bringing it forward today is we're soon going to run out of good weather to be able to do this, and so I didn't want to wait even another week to try to get the contracts through.
Okay. Oh, so they've got a bad roof, you're telling me, right?
Yeah, the whole one, it has to be replaced.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement between the Portage County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Water Resources and Garland DVS, Inc., for roof replacement at the Shaler'sville Water Plant.
I second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll flip to number eight.
And then, I know that you talked with Todd this morning about the possibility of buying additional, two additional vehicles for the sheriff.
Yes.
And one of the caveats was you wanted to get or hear the information about the Detective Bureau. So, luckily, I was able to get ahold of the sheriff, and then he responded back to me just a few minutes ago that they have twelve cars assigned to the Detective Bureau, and that two of those, he believes two, are assigned to the warrant division, because they were unmarked.
Okay.
And so, if that, he didn't give me the exact list of them because, is of the short notice, but he said that, that would be the count, and so if you are willing to go ahead, then I've got, I prepared the, the resolution of necessity to purchase the two.
Okay.
And Todd will be able to get it, and I will be able to get them ordered before the cutoff date on the thirtieth.
So, is that the number of the detective cars that they need, then? I mean, is that what's...
That's what he said.
It's total of twelve, two of which will be assigned to the warrant.
Right. Two of them that they use in the, for warrants, yeah.
Okay, so his total number for detectives is twelve.
Is twelve, yes.
So, we can add that to our chart?
Yes.
Yeah.
And be done with it.
And then ask if he could email that to you, so...
Yeah, and give a, yeah, I think that once he's able to catch up with dete, not detective, but Patrolman Mitchell, that was kind of the guy that's in charge of his fleet of things, he'll be able to give us the exact list, but he was out doing something, Dale Kelly was out, Jerry was out really responding.
When we had that meeting, though, we did have a total number for every division except...
Except that one, yeah.
So, now we know...
Exactly what that's supposed to have, too.
So, it took a long time from that meeting to get this number, but...
So, Joanne, again, for this year, how many vehicles are we adding to the sheriff totally?
We bought, we, we've already purchased three.
Right.
And these two will make now five for this year.
Okay.
Yeah. Brand-new.
And was that our goal?
I believe that that's, you know, in talking with Todd, and what we had done in past years, that if we could replace five every year, not lease them, but purchase them outright, that we will get back into where we're, yeah, we're rolling them, and we're not going to have so many down, all down at the same time. It's when you purchase that big slot of ten, fifteen cars, and then all of a sudden, all of those fifteen cars might be, you know, going at the same time, that causes that.
I would just really, really like to resolve this car issue.
Yeah, and I think, I think they're playing with Todd, you know, and I'm hoping for the budget for next year is to do five as soon as we can order in, in the beginning of the year.
See, I think we have kind of resolved the issue because we're putting them on a rotating basis to buy them, which is a smart thing to do, and then also, now we have a handle on how many, because before, we never had a handle on how many.
So, that's a big step there.
It's a big step, yeah.
Motion to declare the necessity to purchase vehicles for use by the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
I second the motion. I second the motion, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Do you need a roll call, John?
Oh, probably so. Would it hurt to have a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for indulging those extra two.
Does it have a number in here?
Twenty-six thousand, yeah, two of them, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, under discussion. I received a request from WIC. They would like to know if we could put a panic button over in their offices. You know, Wednesdays, they have late clinic night, and you never know, you know, that we don't want to think that someone's gonna come in there and cause us trouble, but they should have the ability to have that. Our particular panic alarm system, we have like 220 buttons that are open that can be utilized. So it's not that we have to purchase anything other than the labor to put it in. And it's going to be somewhere probably between $200 and $500, depending on if we have to hardwire or if we could use wireless. I'm thinking that maybe wireless over there because of the location, I don't know yet, and that's, I won't know until our gentleman comes in and gives that.
When are we getting wireless up here so we can have...
On your computers?
I meant for Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi? That piece was supposed to be in the second part of the IT upgrade. And to be honest with you, Brian and Todd and I haven't met for a while on exactly where we are, and I, and I think we need to call a meeting together to go over that, where are we with that and where are we with the total replacement project, because we really haven't heard for a while where Brian is and some of that, so I'll ask that and get back to you guys on that.
All right, on the panic button, should we have one in here as well?
Well, you know, we've talked about security and panic buttons. I mean, Brad, the treasurer, has even said that they would, they need a panic button there.
And I, no, he's not panicked. Now what I...
But it doesn't go anywhere, I don't think, does it? Doesn't work?
Yes.
It does work.
Well, it goes to our panel here, and then what happens is the signal that goes to the sheriff's department, they have to come here, get into the security office to see where it's located.
Okay.
So, it in fact works the way it was intended to work. I know the panic button system that they have at the riddle block and at the courthouse, when you hit the panic button and it goes to the second floor holding area, it'll say it's Judge Pittman's court.
So it identifies the location?
It identifies that piece. Now, I, I worked with Brad. He had asked me to get him a quote on putting a card swipe for entry into their offices down there, and I got that for him and gave it to him, and he was going to, I think, wanted to talk to you folks about it. And I can share those figures and facts with you in case you want to, you know, move, move ahead with doing that, because I'm sure it would be coming maybe out of the maintenance budget anyway.
For today, why don't we just go ahead?
Okay, the panic button.
Do a journal entry? Will this come out of her budget? That I, I will have to talk with her. I don't know if it can because of the way the grant is, but if, if we have to do it out of the maintenance budget, I think I could. And again, if she ever moved out of there or moved to a different facility, you can stay there for the next question, so...
Okay, so we'll do a journal entry of approval.
Yes.
Other things?
Um, yes. Number, item number two is, I, and I, I'm sorry that Brian didn't bring it up when he was here, but...
He said that room had been cleared out. 617.
He, yes, they had things stored in there, and he's totally cleared it out and wanted to know if he can have that room.
Is that the corner room?
It would be just like where Maureen's down below, yeah.
Yeah, now, I wanted, they asked for that a year or two ago, and I said at the time, and I'm hoping that we can say it again, when that center area is completely cleared out with all the stuff that's in there, then we'll consider allowing the use of that other room.
I...
Otherwise, I don't think that center room will ever be cleaned out. That's how I feel.
I wanted to go down there today and look at the area to see if, what the center looked like, but I didn't have the opportunity.
Now, today, he did talk a little bit about clearing it out, but he did also say that because we're getting a lot of things back from the courts, that it may be a while, but I would like to use that as leverage, because otherwise I don't think that ever, that center room will ever be cleared. I mean...
Okay, are you saying he wants that for his office?
He wants it for Sean, who currently is in what they used to call the machine room. He wants to move him out of there. Noise, I think, that kind of thing, you know, working inside there, and I think that's one of the reasons why he wanted to move or have that room. I can absolutely, if you want me to relay the fact that we, we need to have that center cleaned out and then go for it?
And you know, I think that's, that's a real good point, the center needs to be cleaned out, but from what I'm hearing, Sean's gonna be the one that's suffering because if we don't let them do this, you know what I mean?
I agree.
And Sean's not the one responsible for cleaning out the center?
Yeah, but when, when Sean works for him, there's gonna be a lot of pressure to get it done. I mean, I, I have photographs from three years ago where there are these very big huge monitors in there, they're just sitting there for a long time. We asked repeatedly to have it cleaned out. Everybody thinks it should be done, so it would just give an added, he said recycling's coming tomorrow, so it could be by tomorrow it could be cleaned out.
Why don't I, why don't I check it tomorrow, since you told me that's coming and see where we're at?
We're hesitant to give more space until that space is cleaned out.
Okay. I'll check it out tomorrow.
You know, get dirty looks from Sean if he does this.
All right, we are down to the handout.
Do you need an executive session today as well?
Yeah, I will after, yes, ma'am.
There you go.
We have a couple of items to change. We showed Bart Henigan.
Good.
And I believe that this gentleman, after it was shown, called Shannon and said that he was going to be bringing up a list of questions because he's now very interested. I believe she said it's, it's a man, a person who wants to maybe have Mediterranean food kind of thing, something. So, we'll see how that pans out, maybe...
I was hoping it wouldn't be a tattoo.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And then down at Kent Uni, we are, they are, they poured and replaced the sidewalks along 59 Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. So we're getting closer to...
It's looking good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's all, we're still on tap, we've been for the motor pool software and for the voiceover IP to hit. Once we are successful on seven and six with that, our intent is to finish off the rest of this building right away and then move out to the county engineer and so on, so...
Great.
We're excited that it works, or will hopefully work.
The, I wanted to say how much I appreciate the landscaping around the courthouse. I think it looks very nice. This was done some time ago, but I've just forgotten to mention it each time.
The trees in the back?
Where the trees are all spaced rather nicely.
Yeah.
And it's sloped.
Yeah.
And so I think as those trees mature, it will be very nice.
Yeah, I think so too. It's gonna be a nice, a nice barrier kind of thing, whatever.
But it'd be nice for the people that live in the back.
Yeah.
And very pretty and beautiful for our side.
We worked with Davy Tree on that, and they, they did a really good job for us there.
They did, yeah, and thank you for that.
That's all right.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I say move.
I second the motion.
Personnel...
Personnel.
Um, resignation.
We have a roll call, please, Ricky?
Yes.
Kathleen? Yes.
A resignation.
It says we're in recess here.
It's working online. I need to reboot that computer, it's not working right.
Okay, shall we go a little bit?